And this is the date and time that the Enin Village Council has set for a public hearing on the proposed 2025 budget. And before we accept comments from council or the public, Rob, I'll let you go over the figures with the council. We'll start there.
Sure. So for your review distributed yesterday, unfortunately, is the proposed tax budget for 2025. So I know most of you have done this before, but not with me. So the ground rules and assumptions of this are, we do appropriations on a calendar year basis, and our budget was passed in January. Those are actual appropriation figures that are on the books that we are executing toward. The revised code stipulates that villages and school districts are to provide a tax budget to the county auditor and the county budget commission in July of each year. And our budget commission is going to meet on August the 5th, when they will present what we have before us or whatever changes are made. We have to have this to the county by the 19th of July. Otherwise, we are not eligible to receive our local government fund distribution. So it's important that we do this as we are doing it. The appropriation and expense numbers you'll see on this budget are not actual appropriations numbers. They are the estimate about what we think we likely will approve for next year. The assumption is that there will be a 5% increase in personnel expenses. That does not mean salaries. That just means the full package that we have for personnel, whatever increased insurance expenses we might have, whatever salary increases there might be, all the taxes and the retirement benefits that we have. So other than that, most expense numbers remained flat for our estimate, as did most revenue numbers. The revenue numbers that you will see that have some increased numbers are, we are fortunately seeing an increase in our interest income. It doesn't represent a large part of our portfolio, but nonetheless, it is helping us. In our, in our street fund in particular, our gasoline tax numbers are coming in healthy, but our vehicle registration fees are down a bit from what we had estimated, but because of the increased interest we're receiving, it's making up for that. Because of the type of statutory village that we are, the way our interest is allocated is 80% to the general fund dollars and 20% to the street fund. And that's because we get gasoline and highway tax dollars, and that's stipulated by state law. Some of our interest income, a little bit, does go into the water fund, and that is based on the amount of receipts that we receive that are held in a separate bank account for the month, and is then reconciled and then shipped over to my working fund. So because those funds are held separately, they do accrue a little bit of interest. If we go through our sheet, you'll notice that we are in the black in everything. We go through our total expenses for the general fund, looking at about $346,000, which is an increase of about $9,000 from the estimate for this year. You'll notice that each fund type has a total of expenses and then a total of revenue, and then you have the deficit or excess as the delta of those. The number that makes some of these revenue numbers look lower than in previous years is that included in the revenue numbers will be what the estimated carryover is from year to year. So the carryover number that we input here is based on if we would expend every dollar of appropriation that we have on the books. And that is, you know, that is not likely to happen. So you'll see that the estimated carryover from one year and then the actual to the following, they don't always stand on par. So the good news with that is likely we will be healthier at the beginning of January '25 than what this number shows, but because it is approved that way, we have to put in those numbers. So.
Let's, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick. On page three, looking at that general fund as an example, at the end of 2024, we're estimated to have approximately $150,000 balance left in the general fund. And Rob and I were talking last night, based upon what we're seeing balance-wise right now and projected expenditures and revenues through the second half of the year, that's probably gonna be more in the $180,000 is what we estimate. We leave it at $150,000 because we're gonna be conservative. The hope is it will be $180,000 or maybe more, possibly, but we leave it in that conservative mode. That balance, if it increases, would increase the estimated balance for 2025, of course.
Available for appropriation. And that's exactly right. So if you look at the deficit or excess row there, at the end of '23, we thought we would have 187.82, and the actual was, if you look at the next column, is that, you know, you had 195.139. So those numbers do increase.
Yes.
So that's general fund. Go to the next page, page four for the streets. Like I said earlier about how our receipts are coming in, the one thing I would show you is that our carryover balance estimate is pretty low. So we've had some big expenses out of the street fund just in the past month, but also over the past two years. So our carryover has dwindled, still in the black, but need to keep that in mind when we're planning for projects for next year that we're gonna have, especially in the early months, less to work with. Next fund is gonna be the street, or the police fund. This is the police, the combination of the police levies, not our special revenue funds. This is what the property taxes bring in. Sort of a similar story. Revenue will be pretty steady because of the tax base that we have, but we have been paying for all of our personnel expenses for the police department the past couple of years out of this fund, and that has dwindled our carryover each year. So eventually, the general fund likely will have to pick up some of that expense for time and then go back to supporting it through the levy funds as council sees fit. But we would not be able to, after the following year, carry out the entirety of the personnel expenses based on the numbers that we have today. Water fund is pretty standard, pretty stand pat. So based on what projects we might have out there, those expense numbers can change. The big driver there are personnel costs, and you'll see that our carryover numbers, it looks like, you know, that 176 number is unlikely as well. We're probably gonna be north of 210 after all expenses come in for the year. So that will leave us at a grand total in the black for those operating funds of $390,087. Are there any questions on the operating fund lines? I'm happy to take those. All right, I can move on to some special funds. The next fund is our ARPA funds. Not much to report there. There's not gonna be any more income into that particular fund. And we were, our expenses, hopefully, you know, by the end of this year, we have to have all of those monies encumbered anyways. So that's gonna be a zero-dollar, zero-dollar system.
Right.
The next is the special police fund. That's funded by donations, and it comes and goes, and we pay for some special things for the police department out of that, but also shop with the company. And whatever the chief and the mayor decide to do with that will affect what that carryover is, but we're gonna have some healthy money there to be able to hopefully.
National night out.
What's that?
National night out.
Exactly right. We can do. Then we have the mayor's court computer fund. So another revised code stipulation is that a certain percentage of the court fines and court costs that are received on this type of court has to go into a computer fund until those are reseeded, like everything else, and then a check is cut to the state of Ohio and then to us to fund into this computer expense fund. And Ms. Tomy keeps track of that, about when she needs technology upgrades, and I think last year we did a new monitor for, for mayor's court purposes. But those numbers are not terribly high, but still in the black.
Rob, thank you for putting these numbers together. Are there any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, I would accept any comments from the public regarding the proposed 2025 Seeing none, I would accept a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post sign, and the public hearing is now closed. So let's move into our regular session. This is the regular session of the Enin Village Council, so we'll call this meeting to order. And Rob, I'll turn it over to you for roll call.
Mr. Bear.
Here.
Mrs. Sweet.
Here.
Ms. Leest.
Here.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Here.
All members of council are present. Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And good evening again, everyone. I would like to give a special welcome to Karen Sisler? Close enough? Okay. And she has two guests with her, Alan Lindsay, Alan, and we have Sean Meeks. Good to have you guys here at the meeting with us tonight. Thank you for being here. Let's go into additions to our agenda. I do have one item of communication, and I have a couple other quick items as well. Are there any other additions?
Committee report, special public service.
Okay. Mrs. Sweet, public service committee, any other additions? All right, let's go into approval of the minutes, and we have two sets this evening. The first set is from our June 11, 2024 meeting. If you are satisfied with their contents, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve those as presented.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Abstain, absence.
Those are approved as presented. Thank you very much. Rob, I'll turn it over to you for the current financial reports for review.
Sure. Financial reports for the month of June are distributed for your review. I would call your attention to an item. If we go to our fund reports, cash summary by fund, the street department fund at present sits at $17,904.44 cash in the bank. That is a pretty low number, but that is also pertains to what we talked about a little bit ago, about the level of expense that we've had in the past month. So the countryside project, that was $52,000, and that was a big hit. Paid as part of the tractor that was purchased out of the street funds, another, another big, big hit. The good thing about that is that we are only six months into the year, so we have half a year of receipts that will bring that fund back up to where we'd like it to be, have more than enough money at present and more than enough appropriation to cover personnel expenses and day-to-day operations. Just hope no one has any ideas of doing a big project in the next couple of weeks.
Well, thanks for the heads up.
But like I say, our, our, our gas tax receipts are coming in very healthy.
And those are monthly, let's point out, those are monthly incomes that we get, correct? Yes. So every month, you're gonna get a check.
We, we get, we get money every month from the state of Ohio for gasoline taxes, and those are usually two months in arrears. We also get vehicle registration fees, both from Clark County and from the state of Ohio. So each, there's a, there's a base amount of the state levies that comes back to municipalities for street purposes, and then counties are able to have additional fees put onto licenses, and that happens to be the case here in Clark County, and a portion of that comes back to townships and municipalities, so we, we get a double dose of those every month.
Thank you.
So just for the good of the order, our fund balances as of June 30 are, general fund, $231,127.97. As said before, the street department is at $17,904.44. Our federal grant sits at now negative $65,000 because we made that $15,000 transfer. We have $51,186.43 left in our ARPA account. We have had some, some invoices come in for gravel at the park, and the agreement at present has been that as bills come in, the township will send them to us if they don't come to us directly, and we will pay those, and at the end of the year, we'll make even with the township and see where we stand.
Good plan.
It's helping us expend those ARPA funds and get them off the books and allowing us to proceed with the park. The police levy fund, $233,333. We will have two lease payments for cruisers come due in the next month, and that will total a little less than $11,000. Our special revenue fund for the police is at $12,802.34, and water is sitting at $357,976.02. And unless there are any questions for me on those.
And just a heads up, I think on that wastewater project, we're gonna have probably some big bills come through for that, our share of the Ohio Public Works Commission, the grant breakdown and stuff. So that may decrease rather rapidly between now and the next month or two. Is that correct, Kevin? Okay.
I'll move that we accept the June bank reconciliation as presented.
One second.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Any questions for our fiscal officer? All right, appreciate it. Couple of items of communication. Planning commission will be meeting on Tuesday, July 16, 4 o'clock here at the Government Center, and this will be for a request from Mr. John Vander Glass and Shelley Wiley, property owners of 106 and 150 North Zina Street, to do a lot combination. This would be in regards to the proposed brewery that will be eventually built at that site. So we'll have two lots that will be combining potentially at that meeting. I have also a meeting Thursday. This would be with, this is the joint meeting between the Greeny Local School District and the Mad River Township Trustees, and this will be Thursday at 8 o'clock at the board office. And Rick, that'll mean you and I and Kevin and Rob, you are invited to attend if you are available.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, so. Just wanna say a little bit about the 4th of July festivities. Fireworks were awesome. If you stuck around long enough, there was an encore presentation after the finale, and it was, you know, we have an interest in that because we do contribute money. And from my standpoint, the parade, under the circumstances, went very well. It was amazing to see the number of people standing waiting for candy, and it was just, it was, it was a nice parade. So thank you to the VFW, thanks to the Mad River Township Fire Department. Ben, you guys did a great job as always, and it, under the circumstances, I think everything went very well.
In addition to that, I'd also like to give a special thanks to, I know, Tina, Jamie, Christie, I'm not sure who else worked on the village float, and Tina, I know, made food and brought out, and also for the village actually winning an award.
Thank you for mentioning that. I don't remember what award it was.
Most creative.
Most creative.
Awesome.
Most creative.
Good job.
For those of you that did see it, most of us that were out there got pretty wet.
Insurance, this is the last item that I had. So our renewal for the 2024-2025, we met with our insurance representative. This is for our liability, and this is the first coverage period that will include the damage that we had to the Government Center. It would've been a year ago, this past December, when the line froze and bust, burst, I should say, and it was $62,000 or $65,000 worth of damage total. So we are going to see an increase in our premium from about $27,000 to $33,000, in part because of that. So that $6,000 increase will include that claim, it'll include a 5% inflationary increase, and when you have a claim, you lose what's called advantage points, and those advantage points add up to dollars. So our vantage points last period was just a little over $5,000, and it went down to $2,800. So a big part of that $6,000 increase was due because of the, of the advantage points that we did lose. We'll get those back, we'll gain those back over time. That was not as bad of an increase as what I thought. Kevin, I don't know what your thoughts were on it, but I expected something with a claim like that, it was gonna be larger, so.
Was that the first claim we'd had in a while, or?
That's the first big claim that we have had in a while, yes. So, and that's why we were getting, you know, about $5,000 on those advantage points.
Okay.
Yeah. But in any case, that was, in my opinion, good news compared with what I had maybe anticipated, so. Any other items of communication? All right, Kevin, I'll turn it over to you for staff reports.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council. Good evening, residents. First item on my agenda there is the mayor's court report for June. You have that in front of you. The, there was a, let's see, total number, 26 cases for the month, 25 traffic, one criminal. Total funds received for the month, $5,225. Year to date, $21,053.60. Total remitted to the state, $1,089. Year to date, $4,053. Total remitted to the village, $4,094. And year to date, $16,841.60. Total dispersed, $5,225. And year to date, $20,153.60.
I'll move that we accept the mayor's court report as presented.
Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Number two is just a reminder, the National Trails and Parks and Rec, the movie night is, will be July 12 down at Galloway Park. So I do not know what the movie they're playing, but it's a movie night, so. We've had some calls, you know, about that, especially today. I think we had about three of them wanting to know.
Get your popcorn, come on down.
What movie? What movie?
What movie? Anyhow. What time does that start?
What's that?
What time does that start?
I'm...
Dark.
Dark. Probably 8 o'clock, I'm assuming, something like that. So that's down at Galloway, July 12. Blood results from June, June 26th, there was 40 registered, they had 35 successful donating. So once again, another great turnout. Next blood drive will be August the 28th. If anybody's interested, get on donortime.com. The wastewater project is, is complete. Did the company, Precise Boring, did a heck of a job. Little to no problems. I did wanna bring in evidence of why we did replace it.
Nice visual.
Oh, wow.
So that's just buildup of mounds in the manganese.
50 years' worth.
50 years.
Crazy.
Wow.
And that was one of the better sections.
Yeah, it went well. It's all complete, grass is reseeded, everything's working good.
Kevin, let's mention that you have a contingency in that Ohio Public Works Commission grant that's gonna cover that change order.
Yes, it will. I did talk to Will from OPWC, and, and once I get the final bills in, he said, make the adjustments on that, and, and it was a part of the project we had to do, you know, so it's not like asphalt in the street, you know, and so.
Right.
So yeah, it'll be covered by that, so. But everything went well, and everything's hooked up and working, so. The soft start for well number four was completed today. So Garber Electric came in and digged that, they started it on Friday and completed it today, so that well number four is back up and, and working. The new tractor, we did get the new tractor, John Deere compact tractor, with the bucket on it, already, already to put it to work in the, in the park and, and working out great so far. So we can't wait to kinda get a brush cutter on it and, you know, rent one and, and see what it can do on some of the stuff that we need to get done, so.
It's gonna be one of those things that it's, you didn't realize what you can do with it till you, till you get it.
Right.
That's where I look at it. You'll find all kinds of uses for it.
Kevin, have you quoted that brush cutter, I think, last time?
For rental, I have not.
For rental, yeah. I think we were talking like $800, $900 or something like that.
Probably for like a week, I think, yes. But I'll, I'll get a more confirmation on that. Eagle Scout project, not started yet, but I'm meeting with Olivia on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. She's wanting to revise her start schedule, which is gonna be next week. She marked out front where the poles are gonna be, and I did contact McCray out of Springfield. They will be coming to remove this one and install all three of them when, when we're ready, so.
Good deal. What's the price on that, Kevin?
$800 bucks.
Sounds pretty reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, so. Um, let's see, let's see. Just wanted to bring, nature work grant, I did print out an application. Those applications are due August the 15th, so I will be getting what I can filled out and getting prices on some, I think we talked about some play equipment, is that correct? Is that what we talked about?
Yes.
So, so I'll be getting prices on that to get that turned in. I will have a ordinance or resolution for next meeting, allowing me to, you know, fill out paperwork and sign all documentation, so that's required, so.
And also, just for council's information, we'll be submitting another project to the Ohio Public Works Commission for partial funding. This will be probably for electric upgrades to the water plant, including a new generator. So that's another project that's, that's kinda in the works here. We'll, we'll see how that plays out as well, so.
Yep, so.
And that's, that'll be due in August, too?
That is due in August as well, too.
So I thought.
Application, yeah.
Okay.
Have to get all that.
So you're gonna get busy.
Yep, not a problem, not a problem.
Which, which grant did we go after for the lights down Main Street? You remember?
That was, we, OPWC at one time, and it didn't, didn't score high enough, way, I mean, it was way under.
The last one was a federal, was that a tip grant that was federal funds that just didn't?
Without doing any infrastructure work, you know, it's just tough to get funding for streetlights.
Right.
You know, they, they'd like to see curbs, sidewalks, storm sewers, you know, things like that, so. And once you get into all that, then you're looking at major dollars, more than the streetlights, and they're expensive enough, so. I did get some interest. I know we talked about me contacting a few property owners off of Sunnybrook Trail to see if they'd be interested in purchasing the land behind them to the creek. I left voicemails, I did get a call back from 187 Sunnybrook, and he, they are interested, but the other one I have not heard. I'm gonna reach out to them one more time, but.
So let's, let's kinda fill council in. You and I sat down and we looked at the map, we looked at the, the aerial map. There was a property owner that came in that was interested in purchasing, but part of that property that we own.
Yes.
It looked as though if we did that, we could square up two other properties at the same time. So I asked Kevin, contact all of them. It would make sense if we had one do it, square up with the other two, and just make a nice even property line back there. So we've got now two out of the three, Kevin?
Out of the three, yes.
Okay.
I will, 199, I'll contact again and, and see if they're interested.
Because we determined it was not gonna be an issue with the water department, but if we did it for the one, let's do it for the other two and just square the whole thing up, so.
Yeah, so. I will let you know how that progresses. Other than that, things are going well so far, so.
Questions for administrator?
Kevin, thank you. Thank you for rounding the corners in that box in the lobby. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Kevin, there was a thing from the Clark County Health Department yesterday about mosquitoes. Maybe we should check to see, last time we were told afterwards about West Nile on Cardinal, especially if we're having an event down at Galloway Park next week, we might wanna check and see if there's any mosquito issues that we've, we got priority.
See if they set up the little trap things.
The traps again?
Yeah, in, in the village, if they've done that yet this year, please.
Okay.
Any other questions for our administrator? Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Uh, okay, the chief is not present this evening. We'll go into committee. We'll go into committee reports. Mrs. Sweet, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. July 2nd, last Tuesday, the Public Service Committee, um, had a meeting and we just brainstormed about equipment housing for the new sports park, um, and location of said housing. And we were, we had maps to, uh, go by and we just brainstormed. No conclusions as of yet. That's my report.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from that meeting?
Thank you.
Second?
And this will be voting on this just the members of the committee?
That says, I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Your meeting minutes have been approved. Do we have any other committee reports? Old business, new business? All right, we'll go into, uh, public comments.
We need a vote on that budget.
Thank you very much. We do need a motion for that.
On new business.
That should have been under our new business. Yeah, thank you.
Keep us in mind, Rob.
I'll, I'll move to approve the, uh, 2025 estimated budget.
We need a second.
I'll second.
The most important thing of the evening. Do we have any, any other discussion or comments on that proposed budget? Call roll, please.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet?
Yes.
Ms. Leest?
Yes.
Mr. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Our bid. Comments from the public? If anybody would like to address Council, you have three minutes and you're asked to state your name and address? Anybody want to address Council this evening? Yes, sir. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Terry Bowser. I live in Springfield, Ohio.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, 1326 West Jefferson Street. And I'm here today to, uh, bring to, uh, what Mr. Howard is already aware of as I appeared in your court here on a simple violation of my expired sticker. What I had presented to these folks in the beginning, you folks don't have an opportunity to see. I dealt with their four people in power here. Um, and I ended up coming to court four times. But what I'm wanting to do is at least give the, with your permission, Mr. Howard, allow them to read the letter I actually provided you before my first hearing.
Yes, sir, and you have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
I'm gonna let them take, take a look at this. Thank you, sir. And when my three minutes runs out, it'll be okay, whatever you decide to do from there. But I wanted to make sure that it was known that, um, 10 days from today, I will be addressing this. So, I would like everybody's opinion on how we can deal with this. I'm not going to make, take advantage of the, the people that live in your town. I will be coming after the four people that actually stopped my cancer treatments. So, this is what we're going to be addressing. Um, if I'm a criminal is one thing. I did no damage. This letter does explain that.
Sure.
And you read it as well. Not denying this, let's get it clear. I'm not denying that my sticker was expired seven months. But I have been protesting my government in Springfield for the, the newcomers coming in who actually killed an eight-year-old kid and they're actually injuring people every day on the streets. Many of our accidents are caused by these new folks. So, I have a right to grievance. Um, what I am finding out, though, is that, uh, federal laws here are not understood. Um, so I did get the certificates from a FOIA request for your, uh, the judge that you have, the magistrate that you have?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask you, sir, how many years has he been here?
Um, since the very beginning, so probably 25 years?
25 years.
Maybe 26, yeah.
Well, the certificates that I get are actually state updates. Federal requirements for anyone to be a judge, it requires a CLE class. And without that upgrade of knowledge that the law's changing in the federal, it does make a difference on how you perceive laws here in this municipality. So, I would, uh, highly recommend, um, Mr. Kavanaugh will be also one named in this because he had a chance. After I even got my sticker, y'all mandatorily made me show up here, to which I've been asking for change of venue, which is a right to request. And that was because I knew the city would throw it away because they know what my grievance is. I will say this, on the 29th of February, I got your ticket on June the 30th. 29th of February, I was pulled over by the Highway Patrol in Springfield who had been working Springfield because of the new arrivals. They know the law's better and have more able to deal with them than the local police. Um, and that's because of their knowledge. That man and me talked for 10 minutes and he said, "Have a nice day, sir." Never gave me a warning. But he pulled me over for the same thing. But once we spoke and I told him why I know you're here and that's because you have more power over what's happening here. And he said, "Mr. Bowser, you have a good day." That was basically what this letter is. I'm no attorney. I'm no, I'm just an average guy. And I presented this letter to him as just a, a guy coming to you pleading my case that I would ask that you forgive this. I meant taking my cancer treatments on the other side of your town. And it would require that I drive through here. So, I addressed this and I addressed it every time I requested a change of venue and didn't get it. I have all my ducks in a row here, but I wanted to come here and allow the council. I can't reach your voters yet. They're going to get whatever's determined from here, um, 10 days from now because that's all I'm going to wait. Um, I have, um, been being traded for cancer, so I don't know what this six months has done to me. Uh, may not be here to contest too much, uh, but we'll find out. But the decision to not waive this and let me go on with no accidents, no property damage, no one injured, uh, just alarms me that our, the power to control my life like that over a simple violation. Uh, and my, you have a copy of my history. I haven't, I haven't had anything illegal in 10 year, or since 2010, I had a ticket.
And Mr. Bowser, if you would allow us to make a copy of that?
Um, I believe you, I thought you folks did and I'm, you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, before you leave, if you could make sure we get a copy of that, I'll have our administrator do that. I would appreciate it very much.
Not a problem. And like I said, I, I, I'm, I'm looking for resolve, uh, but I am not going after the community. I'm going after individuals. Um, and that's, that's only fair. Um, you know, to go to a small claims court for my life, I'm not even asking for the full amount. So, you're going to see what's going to happen in 10 days. I'm hoping we can talk and we can do something because I am ready to do the steps that I need to do. The addressing of the judge and not having the certificates, they're CLEs. That's a federal 40-hour test every two years required. The ones I'm seeing are for opiate and DUIs and it's three-hour classes. There's also a 10-hour addition to that. Um, and I have these notes, but I only got a few minutes and I probably went over that and I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, your, uh, concerns have been noted. I appreciate your comments. And again, thank you for allowing us to make a copy of that.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address Council this evening? Okay, I would entertain a motion and a second to enter into executive session to discuss the employment, compensation, and appointment of a village employee.
Some moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Was the second, Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet?
Yes.
Ms. Leest?
Yes.
Mr. Hannah?
Yes.
6:38.
Okay, we'll need a motion to return into regular session.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Who's least?
Yes.
Okay, we'll need a motion to return into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Call or roll please.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Ms. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Baer.
Yep.
Mr. Rittaker.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hanna.
Yes.
And Rick, I'll turn it over to you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve bonuses for the administrative side in the amount that was discussed in executive session.
Second.
Call or roll please.
Mr. Hanna.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Rittaker.
Yes.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
Ms. Sweet.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
That motion does pass and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.